Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 6, 2010 meeting of the Milton School Committee. Please stand and join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting tonight is being tape recorded. And I will ask if there are any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda, school committee members? I actually have two. We're going to not look at the calendar again. I had a few edits from the one that was sent out to us. And also Jane Dawson is not able to be with us tonight during, under the superintendent's report. Anything else? Okay, so we'll accept this as written. We'll move on to Citizen Speak. Tonight we have Chris Maven and other members of Citizens for Diverse Milton who are here to speak to us. Welcome.
Evening.
Good evening. My name is Karen Horrigan, and I am a Milton resident, parent of middle schooler and a high school senior, and also an employee of the Milton Public Schools. And we are here representing Citizens for Diverse Milton, a grassroots organization of parents and concerned residents and clergy in, from Milton. And our goal is to ensure that all Milton Public Schools students have the opportunity to achieve to their highest potential. And we pursue this goal by supporting a number of, number of main operatives. One being racial and cultural diversity among staff and faculty, equity in educational outcomes, an inclusive curriculum, and an affirming school environment for all students and families of racial and cultural backgrounds. We appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight on the occasion of the superintendent's report that is presented annually on the implementation of the Milton School Committee's policy on diversity, a policy which you can be very proud of. Citizens for Diverse Milton, or CDM, worked with the school committee to create that policy back in 2001. And we have also worked with each Milton Public School administration over the years, starting with Mary Grassa O'Neil, which means that we've been working with Mary Gormly for over a decade.
I'm Cynthia Geis. I live on Canton Avenue. We are delighted that as superintendent, Mary has embraced the principle of having an active diversity committee in every school, made up of parents, teachers, administrators, and where appropriate, students. Moreover, her administration and CDM organize two meetings per year in which all local committees come together to discuss and plan their work. Student-based committees support the Milton Public Schools' core value of respect of human differences in your policy on diversity. Our expectation is that active focused committees will meet monthly to deal with such issues as professional development, class and school-wide instruction or events, and events, parent and student outreach strategies, participation in hiring committees, and advocacy. The reality of this varies from school to school, but CDM is committed to working with the administration to ensure there are six strong, active committees. Past examples of local diversity committee work include: the Tucker Diversity Committee organized a career week featuring a majority of school family members and adults of color who shared their careers with students grades K through five. The Pierce Middle School Diversity Committee organized welcome activities for families new to Milton, followed by informal in-school meetings with new students during the year. The Milton High School Diversity Committee reviewed data on enrollment in AP and honors classes and has worked to address underrepresentation of students of color.
One area of particular emphasis is your policy on diversity and the benefits to students from contact with teachers and staff and other adults of diverse backgrounds. For this reason, the policy calls for actively promoting and hiring candidates of color and striving for a workforce that reflects the demographic composition of our school population. Unfortunately, there's been little or no progress in this area over the past several years. In fact, while the proportion of students of color has risen significantly during the last decade to about thirty percent of our population, the proportion of staff of color has been stuck in the single digits. We recognize that there have been layoffs and that there's been cuts, and that impedes our progress in this area, but in such circumstances, it's necessary to reexamine our institutional practices that may work against our goals. For example, Milton Public Schools has a tradition of hiring from within, which tends to perpetuate the current staff composition and therefore tends to undercut the goal of diversifying your teaching and administrative staff. Of course, you know, this practice should be employed sparingly from our viewpoint. The retention and promotion of staff of color tends to support this goal and should be intentional and an explicit strategy for creating a diverse workforce at every level, including principals. We look forward to continuing to assist the administration to find and hire highly qualified teachers and staff who can serve as multicultural role models. We will also commit to work with Mary and her staff to eliminate student achievement gaps, thereby giving every student the chance to achieve his or her full potential, which is CDM's ultimate goal. Thank you.
And as you said, we'll hear Ms. Gormly's diversity report later in the evening. Thank you so much for being here. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the August 24, 2010 school committee meeting.
So moved.
Is there any discussion or corrections?
On the technical piece at the very end, it, when we heard the executive committee, it said by a roll call voice vote, I think it should say unanimous. You're supposed to record roll call votes. So I think it should say by unanimous roll call.
Good, good catch. Thank you very much. So with that addition, are there any other comments? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. And we will move on to the superintendent's report. Ms. Gormly?
I'd like to ask to join us at the table our art department, representatives from our art department, and our fine arts director, Dr. Noreen Diamond-Birdette. And I'll let Noreen do the introductions. Patty Sampson, our elementary visual arts teacher, Karen Hughes representing Milton High School Visual Arts Staff, and Dr. Noreen Diamond-Birdette. And Stephanie Sherman was going to join us.
She, she was. So we keep looking. Hopefully she'll be here soon.
Kristen Bagley-Jones had asked as an art advocate, as we all are, for the arts for this presentation tonight. She'll come in, I'm sure. She was stuck in traffic, but obviously she can view your presentation that's being televised. So I'm going to turn it over to our very qualified art department to present.
Thank you, and thank you for having us tonight. I'm just beginning my second year in this new role. Instead of just being the director of music, I get to also be an advocate and supervisor and director of visual arts and family and consumer science. So we find that we have so much in common. This is a wonderful grouping of people, that's for sure. This art department is really very, very strong because of these two ladies and the other art faculty. They are creative, absolutely tireless, they're willing to do whatever it takes, they have built a wonderful sequential curriculum that unfortunately at the elementary school, I'll get to that, was cut in half. But right now, we are reaping the benefits of what we had before, the cuts of 2007, 2008. And so we also have a superior program at the middle school and at the, and at the high school. At the elementary school, doing all four schools, every single student at the elementary school, Patty Sampson. Like, how could you possibly do that? She does. At the middle school, we have Stephanie Sherman and Robin Thompson, a brand-new teacher. And at the high school, we have Karen Hughes, and we have Cassandra Derby. And I have Patty and Karen here tonight to specifically talk to you about the elementary and the high school levels. My real concern is what I'm, what I'm talking about, this, this cut in 2007, 2008. At that point, I was the director of music, and we called it the year the music died. Because when you cut a program at the elementary level, you're cutting the foundation, you're cutting the bottom of the pyramid, and it's not going to take long before the, the top of the pyramid's not going to be quite so high, and that these students are not getting these wonderful opportunities that the students in the past had had. The year before that, every student at the elementary school was having art and music all year. That was cut in half. They were getting it half. They were getting it for either forty or forty-five minutes. That was cut back to thirty minutes. So it was cut more than half, actually. And at that time, there was also fourth and fifth grade chorus. I'm just getting into music for a minute, just to, to show how monumental this, this and severe this cut was this year, that, that year, 2007, 2008. Because we have an administration that supports the arts as soon as possible, we've been trying to get things back. And, and now we have music back all year, but just for the thirty minutes. And our goal is certainly to get art back, at least that, but thirty minutes is, is not sufficient for, for either one. And definitely not for art when you have to pass out equipment and get it back, and I mean, you have that all, that, it takes time. It takes ten minutes of time just to, to work on either end of an art class. We all know that. So that is absolutely something that I am very strongly advocating for, that we know it's tough times and, and the budget is what the budget is, but this is so crucial to children that they have this wonderful sequential curriculum that the art department has, has devised that they have now had to cut in half. And I know Patty wants to speak to that.
Just two short things, basically. There was a definitive study done a few years back, and what they found was when you cut the things that students look forward to out of the curriculum, be it phys ed, music, art, whatever their half an hour is that they look forward to, like, oh, okay, it's Wednesday, I have this, that they found that test scores actually go down in elementary school without that being a part. Even if you're not an artist or a musician, it's still something that you really do look forward to. So kids work harder knowing that that carrot is there. So I really hope we can get that back. And the second thing being that in thirty minutes for half a year, it's almost impossible to cover standard seven and eight. It's hard to discuss a visual dialogue of, of students' artwork with, with students when they're barely finishing the work under the wire. So I'm really hoping that that should be another area that we really look at to try to bring back, because I really, I know they want to do that.
Thinking of that, that cut means if there was never a holiday, let's say you are the lucky child who has art on Tuesday, and there's, there are not too many interruptions Tuesdays for holidays, well, maybe there's a school assembly or there's some reason why you don't have art that week. If there weren't any of those, if you really got to have it every single time, you'd end up with eighteen hours of art education in the whole year, which must sound horrible, I hope.
I have to say, when I was thinking about what to say, I thought about how wonderful the program is at the high school. And it is only possible because of the foundations that the elementary and the middle school has built. To have students come in and be able to do an AP studio art program, which now we have twenty-one students going into the exam, and they are diverse. Their, their ability to do that is, is incredible. And they have to complete twenty-nine pieces of work and submit it to the AP as a portfolio of work. And it's something that challenges them to see how they do from all the other schools across the nation that, that do that. And I remember Milton Academy came in last year, they brought in a visiting artist, and the first thing I asked their art department head was, "So how are you guys doing on the AP studio art?" And he said, "Oh, we don't have AP studio art." And I said, "What do you mean?" He said, "Well, the kids do it on their own. It's not a class." And I thought, wow, that's something that, that Milton Public Schools offers Milton residents, and it's really important. But I wouldn't even have half the success if it didn't come from, from the bottom and from the foundation, and, and it really makes a big difference.
Right. Does anyone have any questions for them?
If I might. Karen, would you share with the school committee and the viewing audience the list of options at high school, the course offerings, and the area of art?
Sure. At the high school, we have two teachers, and we offer Foundations of Art. It's grades nine through twelve. It's the first course that a student takes, whether they're interested or not interested in art, and it's a studio-based course. We offer Drawing One and Drawing Two, and those are honors-level courses if the student chooses to take it at honors level. All the courses I'm mentioning now are half-year. We have Visual Literacy as well. It's for the student that would rather do a non-based, non-studio-based course in art. And we have Photography, which I'm sad to say is not, I have two classes, and that's dwindled down, and it's actually Digital Photography with Adobe Photoshop. But it, it just happens that the students have, they love taking the class, but there's so many classes at the high school that they have a hard time fitting it into their schedule based on AP, other classes in AP. We also have Painting and Sculpture, and that's honors as well. That's a full-year course, and AP Studio Art, and that's, and Advanced Art in the same class. Advanced Art is for the student that wants to take the AP curriculum but not take the AP exam, and those are all honors and AP classes.
And how many students do you think graduated last year and went off to art institutes or to study art at the grad, in university?
I would say six. I don't encourage, I, yeah, I don't really encourage students to, as seniors, to go and apply to only an art college. I myself went to Skidmore College and then NYU, and I offer them with the AP course and the Advanced Art course, I offer them the option of putting a portfolio together to any college of their choice and submitting that, because I feel like they, a lot of students don't know what they want to do. And just to go to an art college puts them possibly at a disadvantage because they're limiting their own options. They may not know what they want to do at seventeen or eighteen. So I try to say, you know, have, have other schools, and, and that's always been my, my way of thinking. I could be completely wrong, but I do encourage them to go to, and, and to be, I have a lot of kids that say, "I love art, but I'm going to be an art minor." And, and they have hard times telling me that, and I'm like, "Great. That's wonderful. I'm glad." And their parents are much happier as well, so.
Mrs. Kelly?
How many students at the high school participate in art? So some probably take multiple courses in art, I would think, maybe, maybe not.
It's a requirement where the student, Milton High School student has to graduate with one year of credit in the arts, a full year, so, but they can also take music and...
Lots of other things count, too.
Right. And we have, so I would say if you average twenty-five students per class...
Two teachers, yeah?
Two teachers, and we teach five classes. Now we need a math teacher here. No, wait, and our teacher can do it.
Two fifty?
Two fifty, and then do that again. Right? Twice.
So about five hundred?
Five hundred.
And at the middle school level, there's a potential to have eight hundred and fifty, with the two teachers, but obviously maybe not everyone gets there.
Right.
When we go to the, when we go to the elementary level, we're talking many more students, right? Do kindergarten teachers receive art?
Yes.
They do. Okay, so they receive their thirty minutes. And is that half a year or every other week?
Half a year.
Okay, so, so I might, as part of my normal progression, only have art from, you know, through January, or, and then the rest, I won't see art for the rest of the, rest of the year. But we're talking, how many students at the elementary level?
Two thousand.
So, you know, from my perspective, I think we've got some imbalance problems. If we're talking about a finite budget, which unfortunately we are, I think understanding allocation of resources might be something we should put on the table. I appreciate that we offer an AP art class. When did that start? You know?
Eight years ago.
Eight years ago. So, you know, AP courses are for the top of your strand. And to your point, you know, getting everybody at least a foundation is a huge obligation for any public school. And I think we need to look at that. Now, you know, if, if we had our way with the budget, we'd be able to say, okay, we're going to hire an additional teacher, and we'll put that in and still maintain everything else. Absent being able to do that, and quite frankly, looking at next year's budget, that's impossible. I think we need to look at how we're allocating our art resources and see if we can put some more balance down to the elementary level. That would be what my takeaway from this. And I appreciate all the effort that's going into a very advanced curriculum, but to your point, if in five years or ten years, you're not going to get anybody who's even qualified to be in the AP class because they never got the foundation, we've sort of, you know, set ourselves back. And so I think it might be something worthy of further investigation as, as the budget process moves ahead. Thank you.
Mr. Pavlicek.
Just a couple of things on that, too. I mean, we talked about balancing their, especially at the elementary school, balancing their experience and bringing them to school to see something other than just reading and math, but the, the fact is that art and music are, are teaching these kids creativity that they are going to need in writing and math. I mean, creativity doesn't pop up out of nowhere. It has to be, has to be developed with these kids. And it's not just we're hurting the arts. I think we're affecting all of our programs by not having that exposure at the elementary level, because the kids don't have that creative outlet that develops the skills that they're going to need when they have to take, you know, answer, short answer questions in Math MCAS or something like this. It's, you know, there's, there's elements of creativity that they have to have there as well. So I think it's, it's more than just shorting them in the arts. I think we're, we're having effects up and down the curriculum. And the other thing I'd like to just mention is we do have some very good advocacy, advocacy groups between friends and advocates of Visual Arts Fava and Fame Music, but they don't make up for the fact we don't have teachers at the elementary school. I mean, it's, it's wonderful to have those folks out there and helping to get some of the supplies and things that we need for our, our programs, but if we don't have the teachers to teach them, it's, it's not sufficient. It doesn't, it never replaces that. So I think that there's, the issue, I think in the last couple of years, to my mind, the, the cuts we've made in, in art and music at the elementary school have been sort of the worst decisions that we've had to make in this several years of budget cycles. I mean, as much as I hate sports fees and this and that and the other, it's, it's, that's one that's just sort of, I've, I've found the most hurtful and personally upsetting to, to see those ones in the last couple of years.
I would also add to that, that it not only works on the creative side, but also the critical thinking skills of students is definitely enhanced by, by arts education. And I also was going to give a shout out to Fame and Fava, too, because they're, you know, they are, without their support, we'd probably, probably be in even a worse situation, so it's important. But certainly with you all on the front lines, it's, it's, you're doing a wonderful job, and we thank you for that.
Thank you.
If I might, if I were watching this presentation, I'd ask why music was restored over art. And what we did last year, we have a future problem-solving program that we'll share with the public, and elementary principal, parents are aware of the program. And what we, we integrated the future problem-solving into the library program for fourth and fifth graders, and we took that staff member, and we were able to then put back the music year-round. And when we contacted Dr. Noreen Diamond-Birdette, the elementary principals brainstormed this idea. Again, they're advocates for art and music, and they were able to sustain the future problem-solving in the library program. Some of the principals said, "Well, you know, we'll bring back chorus, the presentation, and it builds confidence." And Dr. Birdette, I said, "I know when we call Dr. Birdette, you'll hear from her that, to her point about building the foundation, that she wants the program back full year for all students." And so that's how the decision was made, and it was really a reallocation of funds. And those decisions are hard. And we hear constantly from parents, your peers at the elementary level, classroom teachers, the value of art and music year-round. And to Mrs. Kelly's point, it's very stark when you hear that it's half a year. And it's difficult. I've talked to Dr. Noreen Diamond-Birdette about whether you put it back full year or you put it back and you have the appropriate time, because thirty minutes is really when you're doing back-to-back, if you even get five minutes between a class, you know, and there are good news stories. We've sustained the ACE program, and to see those art and music rooms, we all taught on a, you all taught on a card, and you went from classroom to classroom, but the art and music rooms are huge additions to your program.
Okay, thank you so much for joining us tonight.
I'm so sorry I showed up late. I had a work emergency and I couldn't be here, so I apologize. I'll get an update from Ms. Gormly, but I did very much want to hear about what's happening with art and music in the schools.
I heard it was your idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry I couldn't be here for it.
Thank you. And now to our diversity report. As Citizens for Diverse Milton referred to, you have a school committee policy that asks for a report from the administration by October 15th of each year. John Phelan is going to give this year's diversity report. John?
Thank you, Superintendent Gormly. You have in your hand the copy of the annual diversity report. It covers, in past, has covered four areas, and we have added a fifth area to be covered in this year's. First four areas are hiring practices, diversity committee, diversity in our schools, and the fourth is enrollment. And we added student achievement to the report this year because we felt it was important to add that component as to how our students who are in our subgroups or in minority status do in the Milton Public Schools, because that is a big piece of what we work on every day in the public schools. The first category of hiring in Milton Public Schools, we are very, very vigilant on having screening committees that represent parents and teachers and administrators who interview all of our candidates for administration and teachers that are a diverse group that represent Milton as they prepare to interview staff. Our hiring is done by committee for our major administrative positions, and our teachers are hired by principals and department heads. We do, right now, as brought up by Citizens for Diverse Milton during public speak, hover at about eight percent of our teaching population is minority, which is a, although it be a state-level percentage, that hovers the same with the state, is not enough and should represent a higher percentage, because our population is at a higher percentage. We are a district with thirty percent students of color. The second category of embracing diversity in our community, we have a great relationship with the Citizens for Diverse Milton. We meet with them monthly and have two district-wide events to talk about how we can create schools and activities and relationships with all of our students and make sure that all students feel well. represent a higher percentage because our population is at a higher percentage. We are a district with thirty percent students of color. The second category of embracing diversity in our community, we have a great relationship with the Citizens for Diverse Milton. We meet with them monthly and have two district-wide events to talk about how we can create schools and activities and relationships with all of our students and make sure that all students feel welcome and are engaged appropriately and achieve each year in each day. Some of the great work that we have done over the past few years is engaging parents. Second year, we were talking and did activities and work on engaging students. And last year, we talked about having two teachers engaging with students and looked at those subject areas from all different ways, from a teacher perspective, citizen and community, community perspective and an educational perspective. This year, we are working on how can we make our individual diversity committees at each school stronger and reinforce the mission of why we want diversity committees in each school and how can we together as a group collectively revisit the mission to make sure that each school has a strong diversity committee. And we look forward to that meeting in October. Diversity in our schools is the third category. It is a list of a lot of the things that we do in our school that are more events, activities and, and celebrations of activities at night for our parents and children to take advantage of. We, we celebrate these things to bring attention to the fact that we are a diverse community and we wanna make sure that we represent every facet of our community and enrollment in the Milton Public Schools. Each year, we do also, in our fourth category, provide you the enrollment data. It is amazing that it has stayed at exactly seventy, thirty over the last three years. We actually had Jane Barrett, our data person, and John Drother, our principal of the high school, who has a doctorate in mathematics to go over the statistics again. But we have been at a seventy, thirty split in our enrollment in the Milton Public Schools after a significant growth over a ten-year period to that number. Lastly, we wanted to address student achievement because it is the most important piece of what we do. We're glad that we can make school an inviting place and create a climate and culture that everybody feels safe because that's the beginning of what makes student achievement happen. But in the end, we wanna make sure that all of our students are meeting with success. And I provided some data through our AYP scores and assessments that the state and the federal government provide us each year. This data is directly related to how our students do in their MCAS. So we presented this slide actually two weeks ago when we presented our AYP scores for the Milton Public Schools. And I put it in the report this year to highlight that we do and have done well with students in our minority groups. And I know that Citizens for Diverse Milton and our diversity committees are not just about students of color or a certain ethnic group. We do represent people of different religions and different backgrounds, but we did wanna highlight how we are doing with our subgroups. Those are what make up our whole student enrollment. We're very glad to show that, if you look in the report, that our K to eight, meaning in our elementary schools and our middle school students, that our African-American population did meet AYP in terms of their district-wide performance. And our nine through twelve performance shows that last year, our students of color did not meet with as much success as needed or as wanted. And after that being a focus of Dr. Drother in the high school, that subgroup actually did meet AYP this year. So there is a lot of work to be done. This is not to sugarcoat the fact that there are gaps in achievement for all different students throughout the district, throughout the state, throughout the country. When we review our scores each August as to how we did the previous year, our coordinators, principals and central office administration not only look at different things that we can do better through professional development and curriculum alignment and how we teach and instruct our students, but we also look at which students are performing and why. And that is a big piece of how, what we feel is looking at the gap between students who are minority status and non-minority status. And we feel that that is a major focus of what we do in the Milton Public Schools, along with ensuring that every student who walks through the door is welcome and has the opportunity to achieve. So we are presenting you this report per our policy. And if anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask.
Mr. Huban.
I, each, each time we present this, I believe I asked the same question, but it's one that was presented by the Citizens for Diverse Milton a little bit earlier. What, what is the issue or why can't we hire a more diverse staff? Is it because we're so close to Boston or Boston pays more? Or what are, what are the reasons behind that? Because I know, I know we reach out to a lot of different publications that canvass that, those areas. So what, what do you think that the issue is there?
My personal opinion is that we, well, first of all, we do advertise in a lot of different locations. We do attend job fairs and attend college job fairs. And we have been able to recruit some people, minority status to the district. I believe that working close to districts like Boston and in different areas like Newton and Brookline that may pay a little higher, I believe quality candidates in general are hard to find and you need to pay them well. I think it's always a constant effort to make sure that you are, have a pool of candidates that represents a diverse background. And we work hard to do so. I, I wish I had the answer and I think if I did, I'd probably be working at the state level because our numbers do hover at, at a state, at a, at a, you know, at a comparison to the state level. This is not just a Milton Public School concern around why there are not more teachers of color in, in each district. This is, I think, a more of a trend throughout the field. But we do work at it. We actually send our resume, our openings and our postings to our partners for Citizens for Diverse Milton to see if they can stretch out to people that they know. We rely heavily on internal contacts through my contacts at UMass Boston. We have our old friend Drew Eccleston at Harvard University who has sent us candidates. We work with UMass Boston, Curry and B.C. to do student teachers that we hope that we can hire as well. All of those are attempts to kind of broaden and reach out as far as we can to different aspects of, or different groups of folks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Kelly?
So, a lot of hiring has gone on over the past several months. You've been very busy. In terms of those pools that you started out with, would you say that you ever started out with a pool that was not diverse? You know, that for whatever reason, just the candidates that were pulled into the net, you know, via advertisement or what, however, you know, was there ever a situation where there was no diversity in that, in that pool that you started out with? Obviously, you end up with, you know, the best candidate through a process, but you start out with a certain pool. So i- is the issue starting at the pool level? Do you know what I'm saying?
I, I think numbers-wise it is, but we do have, we had, for example, the, the lodger hires, the, we had two principal hires this year. We did go out for a director of pupil services, which was Jeff Rubin's position. The two principal pools were, I believe, had diversity in them and we actually had finalists that were minority candidates. So we were very, very happy about that. I don't remember a candidate of, of color or a minority candidate being on the special ed pool in the end. And in the teaching pool, we, we do, we do have candidates of color at times that we have. And when it comes down to it, I believe there are times where we make hard decisions about who we hire. We are, and just got off the phone with the state, we are responsible to be at least ninety-seven point three percent of our staff has to be certified. And, and with our status, we have to be now a hundred percent certified by state rules. So it's very difficult now to take a candidate who you might think is a good candidate that might not be certified and take a chance on them and give them a waiver. You're putting the district at risk a little bit in terms of its status with the state. We try to hover at that ninety-three, seven point three percent. And we actually had a phone call today with Maureen Lally from the state asking us why we weren't a hundred percent certified and what are we gonna do about it? And where is our money gonna go to ensure that all of our candidates are certified? So there are other factors that play into the, this percentage, but it doesn't mean that it's not a goal and it's something that we work very hard on.
And if I might add to John and the principals and the screening committees' hard work, another part of this work is when you hire individuals of color to give them the mentoring and the support so that they stay in the district. And so we're very attuned to how individual, all individuals identify that they apply in Milton. And it's not very often that we offer somebody a position and they go someplace else. You know, between the facilities, the opportunities for extracurricular opportunities, I often say to a candidate, when you come to teach in this community, you'll never call a parent a guardian and not get a call back by the end of the day. So this is not a place that you're coming, that discipline's a problem. These students are right down to business, their parents want them to succeed. This is a place where if you call a parent, you're going to get a response by the end of the day or within twenty-four hours. But we are very conscious of, when I interview people or talk about the town of Milton, I say that our diversity is one of our three largest assets. And I call these children in the Milton Public Schools the most fortunate children in the world, absolutely in the state. If you walk the halls of our schools, this is a diverse population. We're very, and I work with our administrators so that if we find a, an athletic team or we find a club that's not diverse, John and I work with the principals to ask those teachers why. And does it take reaching out? What's going on in that organization? We have looked at our AP data. When we were working with Mass Insight, our advanced placement data was the best in the state. We shared that with you. Opening wide open, our advanced placement classes and not wanting to find classes that are racially identifiable, or not finding advanced placement classes that aren't diverse. And that's our goal. And we talk openly about all children achieving. We talk openly that we too want our staff to be more diverse and our administrative staff to be more diverse. I would tell you that our leadership team, I often say to John, when you sit down, I've often said, we don't sit down with white women anymore. If there are four or six white women at the table, the meeting's over. It doesn't happen. And I can see that all of our principals understand that. And I've often said, you know, our six principals sitting down with our sped director and our leadership team, we're better because of the diversity that James Jet brings to the table. And again, our goal is to expand that diversity and we work hard at it. And as hard as we work at it, we wanna secure and make sure that the people who are in the district. And when we get all through with this, the advertising and talking about salary, it's really, it's interesting, whether it's diversity or not, it's how somebody feels about the district and then that personal contact. You know, residents bringing, finding people and putting them our way, or teachers in the district having friends that they, you know, read the openings and bring candidates our way. So it is a huge goal with our families, with our students, with our staff. And it is a very, very unique school district. And again, our diversity is a huge asset for anybody going and attending the Milton Public Schools.
Just, just lastly, I, I think that the work that the Citizens for Diverse Milton do in terms of their monthly meetings with Mary and now myself and getting the group of principals together and staff and community members twice a year is really important. It, it keeps this issue on the front burner. It keeps an open dialogue with this group that represents the whole community and their desire to make sure that we are responding to and respectful of and welcoming and working towards a diverse school population that, that succeeds. So it's, it's a very good relationship. We enjoy the meetings. They're very frank and open conversations about the work that's to be done. So I think that the importance of the Citizens for Diverse Milton help create a diversity report in a practice daily that, that really works and will continue to work for all students.
Ms. Beckley-Jones?
Just a couple of comments. I do think from working with you, Mary, and with you, John, you know, it's very refreshing to be around your commitment to the diversity because I think that that's really important, not just for kids of color, but for all of our kids. And I do see a changing up at the high school, for example, with my kids' classes. I've seen more teachers of color and that's been really welcome. It would be interesting if you don't keep track of the pool in terms of your candidates. I don't know if you do or not, but that would be interesting. I know I sat on the pool, on the committee for the special ed director, and that was a very small pool to begin with of people who are qualified. But it would be interesting to see over a year or so, what are, what, what does our pool look like? Because I think you're trying really hard, but are there some barriers, like Chris pointed out, as to why we're not? What do you think would be a reachable goal or a workable goal? Were it eight percent diversity among our staff? I didn't get the time to print out the report. Do we have a goal of what we'd want it to be or what's reachable?
Well, as John said, I have to check this year and last year, but we were the highest on the South Shore. And to Mr. Hubans, you have to talk about your geographic area. So I would report out to you, I will find out what the percentages are in our geographic area. We talk about measurable goals. I want to increase. You know, not to, as Citizens for Diverse Milton said, to stay the same. But again, we hired, no, only the reading positions were new positions, but to hire, to hire when we're replacing and to increase. And if we're increasing and we have teachers who are succeeding and flourishing in the Milton Public Schools, that would be the goal. You know, I'm not prepared right now to say that I want, you know, that I would put a number on us.
Okay.
Because our charge is to put teachers in front of students and administrators in front of teachers and students, but to continue to increase. And we did plateau. We did plateau. But again, in our correspondence with Citizens for Diverse Milton, again, to me, the message is, when we did the principalships, we had in one situation, a finalist, an individual of color. So again, those individuals at that level, they decide where they want to apply. And anytime through the process, they can take themselves out of the pool. And so the message to me, and I did exit interviews with two individuals of color from leadership positions, why they didn't get the positions, and that they wanna come here, you know, that's, we have to continue to grow. But are we a community? You know, we don't have to worry that the individuals of all races don't want to come here. But we have to, you know, to John's point, whoever asked the question about the pools, quite frankly, I think you hear about it's so hard to fill science and math positions. It's very interesting. It's very hard to fill Spanish positions. I think the public would be surprised at how difficult it is for us to fill Spanish positions. So that's really in relation to ship, to the pools also. You know, and again, we always, you know, I've said to Citizens for Diverse Milton, in the leadership positions, if we had a pool and we asked candidates and it wasn't diverse, we would go back out. And I tried with the principals to say, you know, did you interview individuals of color? Because to Mrs. Kelly's point, if you don't have a diverse pool, you're not gonna have a diverse candidate that you put forward and you're not gonna have a diverse staff. So I'll tell you, this certification, three short years ago, we could hire individuals and we could hover around ninety-eight, ninety-seven percent certified. And we had to go on a conference call with the state today because when you have AYP issues, you now have to be a hundred percent. And so we have now three people who aren't certified and we're working on, you know, what their timeline is. And we had to do a conference call today around our AYP issue, having a Title I school. You can't have a teacher in a, in a Title I school that's not certified. And so before, we could hire individuals who weren't certified and all of those issues enter in though. It's, it's very complex and it's a good question. You know, we don't want to stay at the same percentage and we want to increase.
Ms. Gormly, just to follow up on that, though, when you say we're hiring teachers that aren't certified, they have a college degree, they may not have completed their master's degree in the area, the content area that they're teaching?
Or they're in the midst of taking their tests.
Okay.
They're in the, you know, November's a big testing session. So we actually have to report out. John Phelan and Sean Walsh, we work really closely with every single teacher. And I have to tell you, over the last decade, that has so changed the, really the standards that you have to be answerable. I, I just have to tell you one thing which I think you'll find fascinating. Sean, Sean Walsh explained to everyone today that every, we can now trace with the certification of every teacher, the state can trace every student's course and whether that course was taught by a course and whether that course was taught by a certified teacher. And so we were, Martha Sherman said, five years ago, we wondered if this day would ever come. And so Sean Walsh enters every teacher's name, what course they teach at the high school, their certifications, and it's so specific that if you're teaching chemistry and you're only biology certified, that's going to flash when they do our reports. So this was, this was really important today. We ended up in a very fine place with the state, and they approved us at the end of the conference call. But it was, it was, I had, I had, you know, five people in a room so that we knew the answers to every question they were asking.
Could I make a point to Lynda Lee's question? Of the 400 teachers that we have roughly, there are four teachers who are not certified, and those four teachers are all pending certification. For example, we had a young person who graduated with her masters from B.C., and B.C. hasn't processed their paperwork yet. So that means they don't count as certified because you have to take the picture on October 1st. So even though we know she'll be certified, we have another person who's doing their internship, it will be certified in December. That doesn't count. We have a teacher who's certified in French, but you have to be certified in elementary and French. So that certification doesn't count. And the last one is pending, all of our materials are in. So we do hire everybody who is either certifiable, very close or certified, in our 400 folks.
I just wanted to clarify.
And I want to clarify again. So we have quality people in front of, in front of our students, and we're very proud of that.
And we also, you know, have a diverse group of people that are, sit on the screening committees. And, and I sat on a couple this year myself as well, you know, the finalists, I mean, the candidates are amazing, the qualities that, that all of these candidates hold. And I heard it said earlier tonight that, that, you know, we have a policy of hiring from within. Well, it may seem that way this year because, you know, most of the principals or all the principals that we hired are from within the system. But that had nothing to do with it. I mean, they went through a rigorous, you know.
Screening committee.
Screening committee, exactly. So, Mr. Cahane, I know you want to say something. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm probably the only one on this committee from a diverse background, and it would be nationality. I didn't grow up in this country. But when I was running for this position, and when I actually won, there was a certain amount of comfort to a lot of people from, that are Irish-American and people who are from Ireland that have a huge population in Milton. So I understand probably fully what Karen and Cynthia are requesting here in, in attaining that probably comfort of level that you want by having more teachers of color and minority leaders here. So you would, you will have my full support going forward with Mary Gormly and John in giving their full commitment to raising that percentage so that you can attain the same level of comfort that I have seen people from, from my background attain over the last number of months.
And it would be nice to have some divert, more diversity on this school committee as well. Mrs. Kelly?
Just as part of the, the data that you gather for surrounding communities, can we also get the percentages of people of color who graduate from our teaching, you know, with a teaching degree? In other words, so what's the initial pool that we're starting from every year? And granted, you know, maybe there are people that move, but I think having that, I don't have any idea what the percentages are, and I think that's an important starting point, to be able to see what we might be able to reasonably obtain. Additionally, in terms of the performance, academic performance, is there a way to look at the growth model via students of color subgroups?
I think so.
I think that would be also an important, because I think that, I think we've talked about it this table before, is the true measure of a school system. It's, you know, how they progress, how are individuals progressing from year to year?
Well, to your point, the Tucker has the largest population of students of color, and their growth was the highest.
Exactly. So I guess that's what I'd like to see.
So the growth model, we'll, I'll do neighboring communities, percentage teachers, staff, entire personnel of color. We'll do some local universities, and we'll give you the growth model data.
Great. Thank you.
And all the types of information that we're looking at.
Just to answer Mary's question, as someone who teaches at the largest producer of teachers in Massachusetts.
There you go.
Our undergraduate population is 9% students of color. And in education, it's a hair less than that. So we are, we're in line with the pool of people coming out.
Okay.
You know, it's, Chris, another question. I have another question, but I'll let Chris ahead of me.
If you could add to that list, you said that you ask the principals when they interview if it could be a more, like, maybe we can't get a number for this year, but maybe we could get a number of, for each screening commit, you know, how many candidates of color do we interview, and keep track of that. And then the other thing that I just want to raise is the idea of trying to work on the high school sports diversification of the coaches. And it's no knock to any of the coaches, or they're doing a great job, but it would be nice, as we had openings, if we could look at coaches of color for that too.
And to Ms. Bagley-Jones's point, she didn't need the diversity committee. She calls me about, you've contacted me about that issue before. So again, it's under examination.
Thank you. Mr. Pavetek?
Just as a process question, I know in many places where you do hiring, you have either an affirmative action officer or someone in your human resources office, which in our case would be Sean, who's the entire human resources office, who basically, at some point in the process, certifies the pool to say, you know, this is diverse enough for us to continue the process. Do we have a processed, something like, do you?
And again, you have to do that for a long time to be able to, you know, and sometimes you can't tell. But we've gotten, John and I have gotten, we've been doing it a long time, and we've gotten very good at it. And this last time, we knew, again, when, that the pool was diverse for the administrative positions. And again, I don't think there are a lot of districts that, you know, sit down in screening committees, and we don't hold a screening committee that's not diverse. And we, you know, and I've seen it, you know, we work with our principals, you know, looking at their site councils, I encourage them. Again, they're elected, the PTOs are elected, but I encourage our principals to reach out to all of their parents so that they have diverse groups in all of their leadership experiences. You know, we, we're very conscious, you know, if we go to school events, we're very conscious on the successes if all of our parents are involved. And to Citizens for Diverse Milton, to John in their presentation, it was, one year's theme was, are we engaging, are engaging students achieving, and who's engaged, and who's achieving, and what's the correlation, and surveying students. And then for teachers, and for parents, are, you know, how are we going, how are we going to engage all parents? Because engaged parents have engaged children who then succeed and achieve. So what are we doing that, you know, are our schools open? Are they open, you know, at the correct times? And are there conferences to, for parents who want to come at all different times? Are we reaching out to parents? We're working on this coordinated program review and examining our own practices when parents self-identify that they don't speak English. Are we aggressive enough? Do you want memos in other languages? And are we making easy for parents? Are we having handbooks available in other languages? Because by the law, the coordinated program review, when a parent identifies, then we have to reach out. And again, it doesn't have to be the law. We want to make sure that all our practices are in place.
Mr. Pavetek, did you have another question?
That was my other question.
Anything further? Thank you very much for that report, Mr. Phelan and your work, Mr. Phelan and Ms. Gormly with the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and Citizens for Diverse Milton. Today was International Walk to School or Ride to School Day. And in your, in your, if we didn't have tonight, I would have walked or ridden my bike to school. And in your packet, we've given you a report, and it's really fascinating. We have to give credit, another group of parents, Dr. Eric Ask and Ms. Dawson was going to join us tonight. And they call it the Five E's. They're working with DPW. They want me to give DPW credit for, in all of the engineering, to be making bike paths. And today, Billy Clark called me and wanted me to report out tonight at school committee, that the DPW is working with Safe Routes to Schools to buy more bike racks. Effort, enthusiasm, and I don't have my, my E's right here. But again, they're working very, very hard in every school to encourage students to walk to school. They put a lot of time into this. Thank you. Engineering, working with DPW. We'll put this up on the web. Eric Ask and the committee, they're very, they're the conscience of the community, looking for crosswalks, bike paths, education, going into our schools on bicycle training, encouragement, encouraging, and having these international and national walk to school days, and evaluation, looking, evaluating how they're doing. So again, you have a very formative committee in town that's spreading out to all of your schools. I would tell you, Eric Ask said to me the other day, I found somebody who cycles into Boston from the Tucker, and I'm going to approach her to be the Tucker chair of Safe Routes to Schools. And so they're passionate. And they have unbelievable research from Scandinavia about the correlation to walking to school and riding your bike.
Mrs. Kelly?
I think it's wonderful, the effort that's being put into, to encouraging this activity. However, I want to caution that there are some families that, quite frankly, can't afford to have their kids walk to school because they have to go off to work. And they may either need to drop their child off at the, at the, you know, before-school program, or drop their child off at some caregiver who will then get them. So I guess, I think it's wonderful. I just want us to make sure that we're also thinking about those families that can't participate, and really not make them feel badly that they can't participate, but, you know, somehow coach it so that it's, you know, you don't feel like you're, you're not able to be part of, you know, the great things that are going on. Do you know what I mean?
I think they want to spread it.
And I'm just bringing it up because I think.
I think they want to, you know, so that if you can't do it to school, you know, you do it for recreation.
There you go.
And I want to tell you, they are passionate. They're even working with teams of parents. If you've ever gone to the Glover at the end of the day, and you see all the cars trying to team up groups of parents so that, you know, Ms. Kelly might walk home, three or four family children. So again, it just doesn't happen easily. They're trying to be creative. And I don't think they're punitive in any way for those children who can't walk or can't ride their bikes. Do you think some are?
Well, I must tell you that I did get a comment from someone whose house received the call this morning, I think, to say it's National Walk to School Day. First of all, it's pouring rain, and you then have to say to your child, no, you're not walking because you're going to get soaked. But, you know, there are, like I said, there are families that can't participate in that. And granted, it's a wonderful event.
Right.
But let's, I would love to hear more of, and if you can't walk to school, you know, here's some great activities to do during the weekend. Do you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Just, just so that we don't, you know, put people in boxes, I guess would be the way I'd put it.
I believe that that's part of the educational piece that goes with it. I'm not 100% sure, but I think I remember that from when Dr. Ask came to talk to us before, the wellness piece of it.
So in that case, maybe this would be walk, I don't know. See, the problem is, it's labeled Walk to School, right?
Right.
Right then, you're separating people. So maybe it's, you know, Ride Bike Week.
Right.
And if you can't ride your bike to school, there's an act, I don't know. And I don't want to make more work for anybody either, but I also don't want people feeling like, you know, they're, you know, separate from everybody else.
Right.
Good point. Mr. Cahane?
I agree, Mary, with what you're saying, but I think the reasoning behind it is not to have everybody walk to school or take their bike to school. I think if you have 100 people, if 100 people are notified, and you can get 10%, you may get five people of that 10% that never walked before or never got on a bike before. I think that's the idea behind it, not to get 100 people.
I totally agree. I guess I, I'm just trying to put somebody else's hat on, I guess is, is my point.
Thank you.
And those are the kind of people, you know, they, they got the whatever message, and they're vested in their school district, and that's what I tell teachers.
Exactly.
You call, they respond.
Mr. Pavetek?
Just a piece on that, there was, I don't know if anyone saw it, there was an article on the news, I think, two nights ago, about walking, Americans in general, lack of, of walking around for different things, and our dependence on cars. And we walk roughly half as much a year as a lot of other countries do. And it was, it was an article about one town that was actually, had decided they were going to put a moratorium on all drive-through windows for any purpose in their, in their city, because they said, at least if you're not going to walk, you're going to get out of the car, and you're going to walk in to the store to get whatever it is you're going to pick up. And they just decided, we're not going to have any more drive-throughs anywhere in our town because people just don't get out enough. But it's literally, I think, the comparison between U.S. and Australia, I think it's Australia walks almost twice as much per capita as Americans do. It's just, and it's, it's not like they have further to go. They live in cities the same way we do, so it's, it's just a cultural thing.
Great, thank you.
We're going to have Alan Cron come to represent the district and give you an update on the bullying work that's being done with our teachers, our students. But I want to remind the viewing public, October 12th, from 7:00 to 8:30 in the Milton High School Auditorium, a presentation for adults by John Halligan. John Halligan's son, Ryan, died of suicide on October 7th, 2003, after being bullied by his classmates at school and online. He was 13 years old. His presentation will cover lessons learned too late for his family regarding how to deal with bullying, cyberbullying, and teen depression. The entire PS team, teachers, parents, administrators have worked over a year to schedule this presentation. There's going to be work at the PS school with students, and then this presentation for parents at night, bullying, cyberbullying, and youth depression. Again, October 12th, that's Tuesday night, this coming Tuesday night, 7:00 to 8:30. And again, it took over a year for the PS community to schedule this presentation, and they're sponsoring it.
Ms. Gormly, but the presentation is at the high school, is that correct?
High school.
Right, okay.
Because they expect such a large group of individuals.
Right.
Very briefly, the Colicott PTO had a very moving and significant event last year in the name of one of their parents, Jennifer Kelly, who died, and her children are at the Colicott School. And they've asked me to speak to, October 14th, at 7 o'clock, you can contact my office or anyone at the Colicott, one school, one night, an evening to benefit the Colicott PTO and the Jennifer Kelly Project at the President's Golf Course. They're raising money so that one book, one school, which provides every student at the Colicott with the same book, and this year it's going to be The Hundred Dresses. So that's an event that's very close to the hearts of every Colicott parent, teacher, and staff member. And they asked me to speak to that tonight. We're getting, preparing for our coordinated program review, the area of special education, English language learning, and civil rights. There was a posting in the Patriot Ledger. We're expecting tomorrow, we put in all of our paper, our files tomorrow. We're going to actually have, they'll identify students, we'll then identify families who will be interviewed. The PACS, the PAC actually, the sped PAC actually has the time in November that they'll be interviewed during the site visit. And as we get closer to the visit, I'm going to share with you some of the paperwork that we have submitted and the really rigorous schedule. But anticipation is high. We feel like we're in a really good place in all of those disciplines with our policies and our procedures. And we welcome the state's visit to look at us and make sure that we're looking out for every aspect of the policies and procedures around special education, English language learning, homeschooling, and civil rights. Briefly, Dr. Noreen Diamond-Bedet was here wearing the hat of the art director, of the fine arts director, but I want people to circle their calendars. What a treat. Every afternoon, if you peek in the Milton High School Auditorium, the Milton High School Drama Production, anything goes. I see. I see 50 Milton High School students who just learned how to tap dance. And it will be Friday, November 5th, at 7:00 PM, and Saturday, in the afternoon at 2:00, and then the evening. Lots of chances to buy tickets between now and then, but circle your calendars for that weekend. And briefly, as we speak, the Milton Foundation for Education has put out their first round of grant applications, so we have teachers in all disciplines, in all levels, writing their grants that they'll submit, a group of their peers. They identify a teacher at each school, sit down with the MFE, and we'll put out $20,000 of grants during this first round. Very, very exciting opportunities for our teachers. And I believe that concludes the superintendent's report tonight.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gormly. Moving on to my report, I will begin by talking about the school committee goals that we had established last year. In June, every year, the school committee meets for a retreat to review our work that we had done the previous year and set some goals for the coming year. So briefly talk, if you could pass those out for me, please. These are just taken from our minutes. These notes are taken from the minutes that are posted on the Milton Public Schools website. So in June of 2010, the school committee met and reflected, as I said, on our goals. Everyone agreed that the level of communication has been excellent within the school district, and also, you know, is improving within the intratown committees. We're really thrilled that that progress is being made. The possibility of consolidating evening activities had been explored throughout the year. Meetings were held with PTO members and the Consolidated Facility Committee regarding this matter, but no new initiatives were implemented last year. However, the district does continue to explore ways to be more energy efficient. Student achievement is a recurring goal, of course, and the committee discussed getting more data throughout the year and the need for consistent assessment tools throughout the schools at different levels. A good job was done communicating and achieving the yearly fundraising goal, and information regarding fundraising will continually be communicated to coaches and families, and the school committee will get regular updates as well. The goal of engaging site council moved in the right direction. Site councils were actively involved in the school improvement plan process. Ms. Gormly has established quarterly meetings with the site council as well. We also talked, reactivating, the academic review team was one of our goals for last year, and the committee removed this as a school committee goal. The math and world language review teams have reported in previous years, English and science reported last year, and reviews for fine arts and history will begin this year under a new format. And Ms. Gormly will provide us with regular updates at school committee meetings on the progress of these review teams. The goal of reviewing programs that could be moved to clubs was not achieved last year. We also had a world language program review that looked at our programs for grades K through 5, but grade 6 through 12 world language program review is still under consideration. And finally, the goal of reviewing the sustainability of the number of programs offered in the Milton Public Schools was a goal that we had set out and not achieved last year. So we felt at our school committee retreat that last year's goals were really lengthy, and that some of our goals were more academic and should not necessarily be considered school committee goals. So these are the goals that we've established for this coming year. The first one is to complete a review of school choice, which has already been initiated, and it will go out in the email blast for volunteers to serve on that committee, review team, excuse me. We will look at art, music, and health offerings, academic review, process of sustainability of programs. Another goal is to establish measurable academic goals. Obviously, this was begun at our last meeting when Ms. Gormly showed, or, and Mr. Phelan talked about the growth model presentation. And finally, our last goal is to have a town-wide look at resources and needs. For example, our student resource officer, security cameras, forums, subcommittees, residency, and social workers, the need for social workers. So these are, some of these are things that you've heard about. We've already, you know, moved full steam ahead on our security cameras, and so we'll look to continue working on those goals throughout the year. Did any school committee members want to comment on that? Okay. So we'll move right into, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Kelly.
Just on the, the look at art, music, and health offerings, and then the academic review process and sustainability of programs, are you saying that's only of those programs? Or is that, see, I almost see that as a separate entity. It's not just art, music, and health, but that's me.
Well, we took those from the minutes, I took those directly from the minutes that we approved, and, yes, Ms. Gormly?
Ms. Kelly's comment, we're, at the end of this year, we'll have the end of the science. The science took longer. Remember, we had an update on the science, and now we've changed the science director. But again, Karen Spalding, what were you going to say?
Just, maybe I'm not-
No, I think you want them broken out as two separate goals, is that what you're saying?
Well, the academic review, in my opinion, is an ongoing process.
Right.
It's for different subjects, you know, whatever schedule you think is appropriate. In terms of making that a more robust process, I think we only get a report, but then we never hear what's implemented or how things change. And I think that's a huge thing that we need to start getting some details on, because that, those are the things that will affect the change and hopefully move the programs forward.
We can absolutely bring the chair people from each of the review of the evaluations we've done to give updates on their recommendations.
Right, and I'm not saying that we need answers to, I'm just saying, just as a process-
Right.
That just to get a report that says, "These are the laundry lists of things it would like to do," and this is a review of a program that won't get reviewed for, let's say, another four or five years, I think there needs to be some measure of, you know, what are we doing and how are we doing it?
Oh, it's a-
As part of that process. And then, just the process of sustainability of programs, to me, is a financial issue. It's when we cut down to the point where we're going to say, "We have to do something," it needs to be looked at, in my opinion, from the prism of, you know, is it reasonable to expect that this program is going to be able to be sustained? And, and sort of through a financial prism.
So would you have a recommendation on how to reward that goal, then? Would you like to take out art, music, and health offerings? Because that was specifically what we said, or you want to make them-
No, I think that was, yeah, I think that was definitely something that was on the table. I think actually this report that we had today was part of that process. I think academic review is just part of the administrative structure for how they review. I'm just saying that I think we might need to look at that process a little bit. And then, the process of sustainability of programs, really, to my, in my mind, becomes a separate bullet in itself.
So, your recommendation, process of, so review the process of sustainability of programs? I don't know why I can't say that word tonight. Review, what's the word you would like to?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Does anyone have any objections to that? Okay.
A question?
Mm-hmm.
Review, just it's semantics here. Reviewing the process of sustainability? Are we reviewing the sustainability of programs?
Well, I think we need to create a process to review sustainability of programs. Maybe that's a better way.
So create-
Yes.
A process to review.
Yes.
And that'll be a separate bullet?
Okay.
Any other comments about the goals?
Then, I'm sorry. So is there an academic review of art, music, and health scheduled for this year?
Yes.
The fine arts and history.
Okay, so health would not be included in that?
No. And science continuing in the process that science was being evaluated.
So then, should we edit that? What was that?
You should probably pull health on this.
Should we take health on?
Okay, I'm just trying to get it.
Mr. Phelan? No? Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we will move into our-
May I say something?
I'm sorry, yes.
On the site councils, this is the first year that I'm going to be bringing them together quarterly. They were brought together last year.
Did I say that, that they were?
I just wanted to clarify it.
Okay. Thank you. So now it's the time for the school committee to give our input to Superintendent Gormly's self-evaluation and reflection that she presented at the last school committee meeting. And I'm just going to open the floor. Anyone can share their comments. And the process for this is, your comments that you shared tonight will be compiled, and then I will present them as a formal evaluation at the next school committee meeting. So, Mr. Hubin.
I want to say that the self-reflection that you did was very professional and very well-done. As far as if we're giving grades, A. You did very well last year and the years previous to that, and I'm very, very satisfied with the job that you do as superintendent. Just pulling a couple of things out from your self-evaluation, I like the idea of more emphasis on the writing, open response questions. That seems to be a trend at the state and federal level, and your inclusion here makes it, brings it that, just that much higher up on the list. Also, with inclusion, 97% of students with special needs are fully included. I think that's excellent, and we'd like to strive for 100%, but, you know, that's pretty I like the addition this year of the mock trial and the debate team. I thought that was excellent. Those are two great ways to get students interacting with one another and learning a little bit more about issues they might not normally look into. I like our continuing programs with the Council on Aging, the Tucker Grade 3 PENPAL Program is an excellent idea, and I'm glad to see that that's continuing. One thing that you have in here, and areas to strengthen, work collaboratively with Town Hall to implement a integrated payroll and personnel system, I think should be, if not number one non-academic goal, it should be number two. And I know Matt's been working with the Newtown Treasurer and had some initial discussions about that, but if we can keep that in the forefront, I'd love to see that happen. Another area to strengthen that you have in your report is school choice. I won't say anything more about that. Demonstrate fiscal responsibility and transparency. I think having Matt here, working under, underneath your supervision, we've seen a lot better transparency. The school committee, school committee obviously would like to continue that with the monthly fiscal reports that are given to the finance subcommittee. I think that's excellent, and those are available to the public if they want it. And as we're coming up on our budget cycle, looking at our budget calendar, we want to make sure that's as transparent as possible as well. And those are my thoughts about your self-evaluation. Again, excellent job. A rating by me.
Thank you, Mr. Hubin.
Ms. Kennedy Jones?
I would say A+. Mary, one of the things that I've really been struck by you with how open you are, whether it's talking about the sports fundraising and telling the coaches they needed to stop having the kids ask for so many things, and just really being open and willing to talk about things that are hard. The Health and Wellness Committee has really put you through some hard questions and really pushed you on a couple of things that you've been very open about. I would completely agree with Chris about the transparency. It's wonderful, and you've really done a great job with that, as have Matt and John as well. And I think the thing that really stands out to me, Mary, is your communication. You really have gone above and beyond and really extended yourself, I think, with the communication, and that comes, that trickles through the system from the top. It doesn't come from the bottom, go up to the superintendent. It comes down to the superintendent. I don't know if communication among schools has improved. I'm assuming it has. It certainly has from my own personal experience, but I think you've really set the bar high, and I think that that's really, really important for a school system in this day and age. I think you're really careful with the taxpayers' money, and you're always aware of the bottom line, but I also think, and this is important to me on a professional level, you're always caring about the kids. Yes, we're fiscally responsible. Yes, we care about the taxpayers' money, but we're a school, we're not a business. We're here to take care of the kids. And an example of what I mean by this is, there was a parent who was having some trouble getting services for her kid, and she told me this story, Mary didn't tell me this story, and she went to Mary for help, and she apologized, "Oh, Ms. Gormly, I'm bothering you, I'm so sorry." And Ms. Gormly said, "Why, why are you apologizing? That's what I'm here for." And what she said to the parent, which will always stand with me, was, "Who I worry about are the parents who don't know to come to me or don't have the confidence to come to me for some reason." So when I heard that story from the parent, I said, "Oh, Ms. Gormly's heart is really in the right place, and I really appreciate that in many, many ways." And I think that that's how you run your schools, and I think that principals and teachers respond to you in that way. And that really means a lot, that you care about these kids, even when somebody else can't speak up for them, and that's what we need in a superintendent, along with all the other things. But we need a heart in the superintendent, and we have one in you. So thank you.
Not to repeat anything that's been said, because I agree with it all, just, I just want to say, programmatically, this is the most complete self-evaluation I've ever read of anyone's year. In fact, it's amazing to see the number of things that one person could actually do in a year. Of course, those of us who know Mary knows she can do it.
I don't know, I didn't do any of them.
But, I mean, these are, this is an amazing litany of accomplishments and, you know, partially, you know, all the different things that the school system is involved in. It could easily be the annual report for the schools. I mean, it's that kind of detail. So I'm really thankful that you put it together in this kind of detail, because it really stresses the number of things that are going on here, that, you know, even people who are intimately involved with the schools don't know all the different things that happen every which way. The only other piece I would just add, that in addition to the other appreciations, the, one of the issues you raised was to strengthen the mentoring system for new teachers. I think we alluded to that earlier on. I think that's a huge piece. You know, keeping good teachers, getting good teachers is half the battle, keeping them is the rest of the battle, and nurturing them and making them better teachers is even more important. So I think that's a, I'm glad to see that in here. I see Mary as a teacher's superintendent in that sense, because she's there supporting them. I think that's a very important thing to be. You don't, you can't just hire people and expect them to perform. You really have to hire people, then encourage them, and develop them into the people we need in the system. I think that's huge.
Oh, sorry. Ms. Cohen?
Mary, when I, when I first got elected, you said to me, "Mr. Cohen, it's going to take us a few months to break bread." I think we're breaking it. And I like what I see to be quite truthful. As the newest member of the, of this committee, I can only reflect on, since April, the past six months. But I have known you for a number of years, especially with, with my involvement with the Milton Foundation for Education. And basically, you are, you are one of the reasons that I ran for this position, because you were in that position, and I knew that I could work with you, and it is, it's working. A couple of positive things that I pulled out of your, your self-evaluation, and maybe John was part of this as well, but ultimately, you're the boss, and so you have to get some of the credit, is the reduction of our other district kids from 54 down to 46. And not only does that give our kids the opportunity to go to school in their own district, but it saves us quite a bit of money as well. As a businessman who deal with politicians a lot of the time, I think you would equal them in your communication skills. I think they're second to none. Now, I think they're second to none, and people from the town trust you. That's, that's what I'm hearing, that's what I'm being emailed about, that if you say something, it's, it means something, and that means a lot to me. As, again, as the newest member of the committee, and I can thank Mary Kelly and Glenn for being on the finance subcommittee, and we're all volunteers here. Would you personally have made my life much easier in being a member of that finance subcommittee, especially when, you know, we meet at seven o'clock on a Monday morning? It's not that easy after a weekend. But it's good going in there, knowing that you're prepared, and so it forces us to be prepared as well. Even though I'm a pretty new member, I'm learning from these guys, and I think I'm doing a good job with all of you. One of the areas I would like to see strengthened, and it means a lot to me, is the Foundation for Education. I think it's, it's kind of sad that we have four thousand children and, you know, for eight thousand parents are guardians, yet we struggle to get six or seven hundred people at the celebration. I think that's something that, as the head of the school system, you could work more on that, because we put in a lot of effort. I know Linda Lee puts in a lot of effort with the foundation and other members here. Mary Kelly's putting it in now. That is a great area to make money. And if we can get fifteen percent of the parents, our guardians, to come to that celebration and donate to it, we double the amount of money we take in. And it's important for people to know that this money goes directly to programs that are not being funded by the, by the school budget. So that is one area I would ask you to, to send out your emails and stay in contact with all the parents, and make sure that they show up next April when it, when we're having the...
April 2nd.
April 2nd, yeah. And as we mentioned earlier, we do live in a diverse town. And I saw firsthand the amount of people that emailed me. I believe I'm one of the first foreign-born members of this community, of this committee. And it gave a certain level of comfort to a lot of these people. And so I would ask you to, to really concentrate on increasing that percentage of African-American teachers or minority teachers in the future. That's something I would really look forward to seeing happen. And just to spread it out a little bit, it makes, it also gives me a lot of comfort knowing that John is right next to you there, and Matt. And I think the three of you together just make a wonderful team. It makes my job as a new member on this much easier, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Mrs. Kelly.
So I echo all the comments that have been made thus far. I, I don't envy you sitting in your position, because there are very few people who get a public review of their performance. And the effort that went into this document is quite amazing, and I think it should be a blueprint, really, for evaluations going forward, because it really details all the aspects of running the Milton Public Schools. And it not only talks about, you know, the academic component, but all of the interaction with the town, how important that is to make sure that everybody understands what our needs are, you know, how hard we're working, how, the transparency that you've brought to all of these processes, I think is certainly quite a change from previous administrations, and I think it's welcomed throughout the community. The effort that you put in going beyond the call of duty is, you know, I don't know that we'd be able to find any other superintendent, certainly that I'm aware of, that goes above and beyond. And when you consider how many years of service you've dedicated to the Milton Public Schools, I mean, that in itself is, you're not going to find somebody who, you know, has that amount of dedication, and, and really, you really do it as a service, not because, you know, you're getting paid. I think you have a love for the town, love for the Milton Public Schools, love for the people that you work with and the kids. And it's really to be commended, and quite frankly, it comes through in all the details that you've presented here. If there was one thing that I would want to encourage you to do, that is to learn to say perhaps no. Because I see that you see all these wonderful things coming to you as proposals to do, and I think it's the human nature for you especially to say, "Of course, we can do it. We'll find the way." And I think at some point, there's, you know, there's a tipping point. And I think to develop a system that basically says, "You know, maybe not this year," or whatever, I think might be something to think about. But, you know, your performance that last year, especially given, you know, some of the things that happened last year, was outstanding, and I thank you for all your efforts.
Well, the challenge of being the chair and going last is you didn't leave much for me to say. But I would like to say that I know how much time this took for us to perform, to prepare this self-reflection and self-evaluation. And she is a tireless worker. You are a tireless worker. You give to every single person in this community. It doesn't matter if you have a child in this school. Their thoughts about the Milton Public Schools are as important to you as the kindergarten parent, as the high school parent. And you work tirelessly on behalf of every single resident of this town. Just to piggyback on what Mary was saying, "We'll find a way," I think that's your mantra, because there's, you know, nothing too big or too small for you to listen to, a problem to listen to, or a solution to find. And the programs that you've developed, the opportunities for students with special needs to stay in these, in their home-school district and not have to commute on a bus for an hour every day, the opportunities that students have in an AP art class, or playing in the jazz band, or, you know, participating now in the new opportunities, the mock trial, as people have said, and the debate club, the Saturday programs, the extended-day programs, you just find a way to get it all done. And we are all the benefit. We all benefit from that, and your tireless work, and your, I know you're fortunate to have John Phelan Immaculus working with you, and I know that it's probably driving you crazy right now not to keep saying that every time someone says something nice that they helped, but you are the leader of the Milton Public Schools, and you lead every day, and we are so fortunate to have you as our leader. And I just want to thank you. Let's clap for Ms. Gormley.
First, I just want to say that I'm no better than everybody who works in the Milton Public Schools. And so we said tonight, we have unbelievable children, and we have fabulous teachers and staff, and we have developed a team, Matt, John, and I, with our leadership team and all of our administrators. And not to be patronizing, but we work closely with the school committee. I don't think anybody would realize, except the three of us, and I'll tell you, when I first came to Central, I said, "I thought everybody had one boss, but you have, you work with six people." And you don't know how many people say to me, "Well, you're in charge of the school committee." And I say, "Oh, no, 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 the school committee's in charge." And I have to tell you that I couldn't work unless I could work, because I feel that I, you give me direction. And I'm not patronizing you here. I said in my opening, "I don't know if you decided to make this subcommittee, these subcommittees work when you hired me to help me, but I can't," I've said to Matt and John, "You take from your strengths and work with me." And I know from superintendents across the state, and I don't think the public understands that the relationship with the superintendent and the school committee, and you are six individuals that all have different goals and objectives, but they really, you work through me and with me to direct the school committee. And I, you, you are in charge. You're elected to be in charge of the school district, and you bring ideas, and you're reasonable. To Mrs. Kelly's point, if we say, you know, "We can only achieve this in this time, and we need more time to do this," and I think, I don't think the public understands that when you have a committee and a superintendent and a leadership team that works together and respects one another, you know, it filters all the way down to the teachers and the parents. And so I have to tell you, somebody said to me, "Well, why did you choose to do that at self-evaluation?" And I said, "Whoa, I didn't choose to do the self-evaluation, and it's part of the open-meeting law." But it was a good reflection for me, and it really provided me areas that, on behalf of the Milton Public Schools, that will help in the goals. And student achievement is our priority, and as I said, every budget decision we make, every policy decision we make is about students and teaching and learning. And it is a privilege to work and teach and to be your superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Gormley.
And to John and Matt, a big round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the finance subcommittee report. Mrs. Kelly, please.
Yes.
Oops, sorry. Okay, sure.
So there's a group of non-union employees who really are primarily support staff to the administration, sorry, comprised of secretaries, people who work in the payroll, et cetera, who are considered, what do we call them, the HRS group? And the superintendent of the administration has presented a proposal for their raises for this fiscal year. So I would ask Matt to just tell us what that looks like. They, just to give some background, last year, this group were asked or were voted to basically not take a raise, except for those individuals who were under fifty thousand dollars in salary, which I think comprised maybe four people. So, you know, when the administration brought forward their recommendation, that was part of the backdrop against which the recommendation came. So if I could ask Matt to present what that is?
Sure. In short, this group has a salary schedule, but it's not exactly like the teacher's salary schedule is, there's no lane changes. The grade is based on the job classification, so if you're hired as a school secretary, per se, you're going to stay in that same grade until you've reached the top step. The grade isn't going to change unless you change jobs. And so they, back at the beginning of the century, there was an outside firm, they came in to do a study on pay analysis, and they set the salary schedule back then, and we've, we've lived with it going forward without any issues until last year with the budget crunch, where everything was frozen, except for the folks that Mary talked about. So for next year, you know, the proposal is to move the salary schedule up two and a half percent for all the steps, except for the top steps, moving from step nine to step ten. We'd move that two percent. And that would allow us to live within our budget for what we budgeted for increases, we budgeted a three-point-five percent increase for next year. And this was discussed a couple of times and voted on Monday, September 20th, at a finance subcommittee meeting. And that passed, and brought before the committee as a whole.
On behalf of the finance subcommittee, I'll make the motion to increase the non-union clerical HRS staff salary schedule by, as indicated by Matt. It should be two and a half percent on all the steps, and the final step would be two percent above the step below it. Just one point on that. Previously, the top step was added a couple of years back at one percent above the step just below it. And so this actually moves it off a hair. So it, this more or less tracks the teacher's contract of two and a half for most people, but the people at the top step, it's effectively a three and a half, because it moves it. It increases the whole schedule by two and a half, and then shoves that top one out by one percent. So that's a effect of it. And just one other clarification, when you mentioned that they took no increase last year, they really took no increase last year. They got no steps and no raise last year. And so they, true zero for anyone over fifty thousand dollars.
This is discussion, yes, Mr. Cohen?
Matt, do you have the figure, the exact figure of the raise in total?
I do. The change, it would be a sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollar savings to the budget. And the raise is actually, in total, because we reduced two positions through layoffs, when we factor them all in comparing one year to the next, it's actually a fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollar decrease.
Okay, but if you took out the two people that retired or left, what is the increase?
Well, they didn't leave. We terminated the positions. I mean, I could, I could, I didn't come prepared with that number, but if you gave me a few minutes, I could do it now.
I'm wondering if we just might give the range of rate increase, you know, the lowest percentage increase to the highest percentage increase? Would that get at the, sort of the data points you're looking for?
Sure.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just asking.
Yeah, that would do it, yeah.
Would that help? Okay.
The, the actual dollars that the staff would earn would range between three and a half percent to six-point-one percent, depending on how they move from one step to the next on the new salary schedule.
So they have a base plus the step?
Yes. That's the way the salary schedule works. When you move a step, it's assumed that your cost-of-living adjustment and your skills and knowledge are moving up with the value of the job. And when you get to the top step, that's the top market value for the position. That's the theory behind salary schedules. I know not everybody necessarily would agree with it, but that's the premise for how they came about to operate.
And if I might, for the public to understand this about the steps, and when Mr. Pavlicek spoke to the people at the top step, is it nine people in the unit? Matt, out of twenty-two, are already at that top step. So that's why the one percent was added, the two and a half on the whole grid, and then that one percent. So that's, Matt?
Yes. Nine of the twenty-two folks in the unit were on the top step. And in tracking the teacher's salary schedule, where the folks on the top step got a three and a half percent raise, we tried to make that work this way as well, since this group, like Glenn pointed out, effectively took a, a zero with no step increase, even though in normal years, they would have been able to have that and move ahead.
I'm not sure, Mary, if you know the answer, but taking out the two positions that were eliminated, how many, how many staff are on the scheduled increase? Does that make sense?
I'm not, not sure I follow the question.
Okay, so how many people are getting an increase?
Well, all of them would, how many people would be getting a step increase? Or how many people would be getting an increase?
Getting an increase in total, and you have that dollar figure. Like, is it the... I know last year, there was sixteen positions, was it?
Last year, they didn't get any raise.
I understand that.
Well, there's twenty-two, and there were, two of them have either retired or retired.
Twenty.
Right, so for nine of those, they would get a three and a half percent?
Yes.
And the remainder would get some? And the remainder would get something above that?
Exactly.
Anywhere up to, what did we say the top was, 6.1?
6.1.
6.1, right.
Right, Matt?
So the... Yes, I'm still, I didn't bring that answer because nobody asked the question that way to me before in the past. Usually, it's a comparison of, you know, what is the individual getting from one year to the next, comparing 10 and 11? Or comparing, you know, did we budget enough for it and did we not? You know, so.
I guess my question is.
You can see, I understand your question. You want to know how many dollars it, the total of the group is going up. But when you, when you talk about the whole group, you have to add the people, you have to include the people in the positions that are being reduced and those responsibilities that are being reserved. So, you know, if you look, it was given to you on September 21st, and it might not be in your packet, but there is an itemized list of those folks.
Right.
And that's where the net comes out to be negative $53,000, because we cut two positions. We reclassified one and we hired a new person when someone retired that went from the top step to the bottom step. So all of that factors into what we have to pay. But you can see individually, the raises seem to range from $1,800 to $2,300.
But do you have that total? So in other words, if we paid, for example, $300,000 last year, are we paying $380,000 this year?
I do have that total, but like I said, it's a net loss because of the positions we reduced. So, you know, I can answer your question, but I just, I would need the time to cull out the other positions that you don't want me to count.
Okay.
Are there any questions, any further questions, Ms. Bagley-Jones?
I just want to, I want to be clear, I understand. So it's a two, Matt, it's a two and a half percent. But when somebody moves up a step by being here another year, they're going to a higher level.
Yes.
It's not that they're getting a three and a half percent. They got a two and a half percent increase, or they would, plus they're going up a level for being here another year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just want to be clear, because that seemed a little unclear. Thank you.
And to the, to Mr. Cohen's point, Matt, we budgeted three and a half percent.
Correct.
On the entire grid. And we're, and our proposal is two and a half.
Correct.
So that will be a savings. So it's two and a half on the entire grid. But then to Ms. Bagley-Jones's point, people go up steps, but then nine of the people are at the top. So they'll be getting an additional one. Right, Matt?
Yes.
So their raise will be three and a half, those nine people who are at the top. And to Mrs. Kelly's point, the people that are going up the grid will get the two and a half, plus whatever their step is. It's hard for the public to understand that when they can't see the grid and they don't understand it. We've got it in front of us.
And also, just to clarify.
And I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's fine.
We also had, you know, it's similar in different, in all the districts, very similar to this. And Town Hall has a grid that steps, you know, not as many steps and not as many positions.
The town side is unionized, so.
They won't be having it anymore.
Well, I'm sure they have some sort of a salary grid, but it's a union grid, so.
I was just, that was the point I was going to make, is that this group that we're talking about is not a part of a union currently.
That's important.
Yes.
I have the answer to Dennis's question. Calling out, calling out the two positions that were reduced entirely from the group, it's a $21,166 increase for all the remaining employees.
Okay. That's exactly what is up there.
He wasn't going to give you that unless it was right.
I'm sorry.
He wasn't going to give you that unless it was right.
It's hard for me to answer questions and then do the math on the paper here while talking. So I appreciated the help from the other folks that kept the conversation going.
But the confusing part was the net loss, or the net decrease because of the two positions being eliminated.
Well.
That was confusing.
When you have, there's only 22 people in the group. So if you have a $50,000 position that's lost, even though other folks are getting raises, you wind up with a net decrease. So when you lose two positions, when you had 24 and you go to 22, those whole salaries, you know, that's a big decrease when you're comparing, you know, fiscal 10 to fiscal 11, when you compare year to year, which is typically how we compare budgets in the public sector.
And that's a good way in doing it, Matt, but the way I would look at it is, those two positions are gone. Forget about them. So now what are the remainder getting? What's the increase there, dollar? And you gave it to me.
Yep.
So just a note, I mean, part of the ability to come to a number like that with the increases we're talking about is we had at least one position that was at the top step, that was a retirement, and then starts out at step one. And so that's part of, you know, the process. When there's turnover, you get that ability to gain some budgetary dollars to put towards other things. So I just want to make it clear that I will be voting against this, as I did in the finance subcommittee meeting, for the same reasons that I voted against the teacher's contract. I think in this economic backdrop, I don't think, although I believe, just like the teachers, that these people work very hard for every dollar, I don't think that we can afford raises at that rate. And I would hope that, you know, again, with this economic backdrop, we would be able to get everyone sort of on the same page. There are many people out there, many residents of Milton, who have lost their jobs, taken pay cuts, not gotten a raise for several years. And I think I wanted to be reflective of that perspective.
If I could say one more thing, and I echo what you're saying, Mary, but, and just to be sure, Matt. So the actual dollar amount that we're going to be voting on tonight is $21,166. That's the increase over last year, when you take out those two positions?
That's correct.
Okay.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Dennis, thank you for asking that. That's what I wanted to ask, too, because, so it's $21,000. And these are the folks who didn't get a raise last year and didn't get a step and didn't get a choice about it, had this handed to them by us because we were in dire circumstances. So I do want to thank them for that sacrifice that they had to give. And I do agree, there's concern about giving raises in general in this economic times with $21,000. And with those two positions gone, whoever left is picking up that work, too. It's not like people are working less. They're actually working more because we cut two positions. And that work had to be picked up by somebody, somewhere. I don't know who, but somebody else is doing more work. So I would wholeheartedly support this.
And just to add to that, Kristin, these are secretaries who service hundreds of students every day. At the high school and the middle school, it's thousands of students that they, you know, interface with. The administration, the parents, the community members. These are not, you know, jobs where they're sitting back with time on their hands. These people are working nonstop all day. And so just wanted to.
From a business perspective, if you want to look at it, that this group of people do a certain group of work each year. And these 22 people, now only 20, are doing this collective work for the students and the parents and the town as a group for $56,000 less than they were last year. The school system is actually making all these functions work and doing it at a reduction of $56,000 than we were last year. And I think that from an organizational point of view, it's important to point out that positions are being reduced and reorganized. And people are getting a small percentage raise, but the work is continuing for that group. And the town's budget is only, is being assessed $56,000 less. So I think that that's a credit to Matt and Mary for reorganizing and a credit to the folks that are actually doing all that work that remains. So on behalf of the town, it's, I think it's very judicious to provide two and a half percent, especially when you're getting a $56,000 decrease to the budget overall.
Any further comments? Ms. Gormly?
I would recommend, I, one note. Often, when I work with Town Hall and they talk about the different groups, I can never really identify who the people are. So when we talk about this group, to Ms. Sheridan's point, these individuals are the secretaries in the school, the individuals who work in our business office, our two computer technicians, and the, any secretaries or administrative assistants that we have, for example, in the guidance office or in the special education office. Because when we refer, we refer to HRS, that was the name of, I think, was it the company that we brought in, Ms. Kelly? Was it Human Research? I think it was the name of the company. So that acronym has stayed with, we had a study done and evaluated their positions and compare, did a competitive study with other districts that we compare ourselves to, to establish their salaries. But sometimes I even know, when I hear Town Hall talk about individuals, I don't know what different classifications are. So for the viewing public, these are the individuals that we're speaking of. And they aren't unionized. They aren't in a union. They're individual employees.
Okay, no further comments? All in favor? That's three, four, and against? And we had one abstention. Thank you. So it was, Mr. Huban, you can join us again. Thank you. Mrs. Kelly?
So the one other thing I just wanted to touch base on was, I believe in your packet, you received the fiscal 12 budget timetable. Couple of things to note is, the Warren Committee has requested by the end of October that we submit to them a level dollar budget. I don't know that we can get down to the details that would discern what a level dollar budget would look like, but we would at least be able to give them the overview of what the rollover of our present personnel, as well as the typical increases in energy or special education tuitions that would be part of our starting point for the process that would then try and get to the requested level dollar budget view as well as, and prioritization, as well as, I believe they asked for a 1% under?
Yes.
As well. So unfortunately, as we do every year, there's a lot of work, a lot of decision-making to go on over the next several months to get us to a budget that we can then discern to the public and have people understand what the impacts we're looking at in terms of next year. So does anyone have any questions on the timeline or things they'd like to see? One thing I did, we haven't, in the past, had two open hearings. One just to hear before we get to sort of the final prioritization. And then once we get to a final number, we have another one. I don't know whether that's something that we would want to entertain, just to hear from parents and community members beforehand, or whether we just want to keep the one that I think is presently scheduled for March. But my perception in past years is that parents and community members are appreciative of being heard from before we get to our decision-making.
I agree. And we've gotten really positive feedback on that, Mary. So do you have a proposal as to when you think we should schedule it?
I don't, but I can certainly think about it and we can maybe bring it up at next meeting, if that makes sense.
That would be great.
Okay.
I think it's really helpful to have the timeline. And I think it's helpful for the public to realize that, you know, we really just finished last year's budget, more or less, and, you know, wrapped up the year. And we're already starting for next year. So it's the process that never ends.
Never-ending cycle.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Huban?
The level dollar number that they're looking for, does that include the stimulus money that we got this year as part of the budget?
Well, stimulus money, I think, I mean, I think we're tasked to say, what are our costs? Where the funding comes from to offset that, I certainly think we probably would note it, that if there's any money that we have that we anticipate applying towards, you know, any funding issues, I think we would need to make them aware of that. But, you know, I think our main charge is, what are your costs going to be for next year? And then let's figure out what are the different resources that we have to apply to those costs.
And to Mr. Kelly, to Ms. Kelly and Mr. Huban's point, you're right. That's going to be our charge to educate the public that we had the stimulus funds and now the cliff is coming. And when Mr. Huban was on the finance subcommittee, we understood that the stimulus funds really backfilled the decrease in circuit breaker, you know, and paralleled it. And now, you know, we wait anxiously to see if there's going to be any additional funds that come. I would tell you that when the new jobs bill came out, reading the Patriot Ledger, I can see how districts have used the money and not initially hired teachers and pulled the money out over two years, what we initially did with our stimulus funds and making the money, maximizing every single one of those stimulus dollars in staff and pulling out the money as far as we possibly can. And so that is really, Mr. Gillis, Mr. Phelan, and I said, that's going to be the charge because we have to educate the public. And the Warren Committee understands it. But again, it is a very, very detailed picture. The stimulus funds, the sped stimulus fund, the jobs bill, it's all very involved.
Ms. Pavlicek?
I think when the Warren Committee was talking about a zero dollar budget or a 1% decrease, they were looking at the general appropriation part of the budget. So the stimulus funds and jobs funds, to the extent they come in as a grant directly to us, have to figure into our computations. But I think in terms of balancing their budget, they're not, I don't think they're looking at it because it's not something they have control over one way or another. But, so I think that's where the zero came from. They're looking at, you know, they're trying to guess, and at this point, it's only just a guess, what level of local aid might be coming next year. And, you know, with question three on the horizon, that, you know, no one's going to know anything about local aid till after that's settled one way or another with the sales tax rollback possible. You know, so they're just, I mean, at this point, they're trying to get a baseline somewhere, I think is really all they can be hoping for right now. I don't think they'll have, given the uncertainty with those sorts of things, they probably won't even have a reasonable guess at what local aid might be until probably February. I mean, we're, I think it's going to be even later next year than it usually is, just because of all the various different things. Ball's in the air at the moment, so. But I think they're just, you know, obviously, you've got to get the process going. They've got to have something they can work with. So that, they already have the date for their all-day meeting. You know, it's already been set. The room's reserved. I don't have it off the top of my head, but they've got it all set up already. So they're planning for it.
That's all I have. Thank you.
We can move on to the policy subcommittee report from Mr. Huban, please.
Policies in front of you for their first reading. The first is a brand-new policy, the media policy. This was brought up by our PR person here at the schools. And she felt, talking with the superintendent, that there needed to be one particular policy that we follow whenever media are looking for access to, whether it's a particular school or a particular class or a particular student. So we brought all that together into one policy. This is the first reading, so that we really don't need to do anything with it. We could certainly answer questions at the second reading, or if someone has them now, that's fine. The second policy, again, is a first reading. This is a policy JIE. It's about pregnant students. We had a review by the State Office of Discrimination that looked at quite a few of our policies. And they brought to our attention that we can't ask a pregnant student to have a doctor's note to return or to stay in school if we don't ask other sick children for the same doctor's note. So basically, the change in the wording is that there is no physician note required for a pregnant student to be going to class. So that's really the only change in that current policy.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Kelly?
Just on this, I looked out at the MASC policies, and they actually have physician in there. And I don't know, and I need to go back and look at it again, but I think it's more around the plan is supposed to incorporate the physician. So is there any, I guess I would ask, from a liability perspective, if we don't have a sign-off by a physician to have a student be in school, is that... a sign-off by a physician to have a student be in school, is that something that would be liable for if something happened? I guess I, it raises, I think, a whole bunch of questions as to how it should be handled. Obviously, if someone's pointing it out from the state, they have issues as well, but.
Well, I'll check your issue. The civil rights audit brought to our attention that when children are out with any kind of illness.